Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We are going to start with Mrs. Logan. Would you like to call the law?
Mr. Level?
Here.
Hang on. Sorry. Mrs. O'Connor?
Yeah.
Mr. Pearl?
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Here.
Mrs. Casper?
Here.
Can you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Soon.
Second.
Whenever you're ready, Mrs. Logan. Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes. Board President's comments. I would like to welcome everyone. I hope you all had a great Thanksgiving and got to spend some time with your family and friends. I don't know if anybody's aware, but since our last meeting we've had an election, we will be swearing in two new board members come January. Mrs. Bodie and Mr. Addy would like to congratulate them. Would also, I would also like to thank Mrs. Wells, Mrs. Chazay, Mr. Loges, and Mr., excuse me, Mr. Horton, for being willing to step up and run in a time where it wasn't an easy election and it wasn't a lot of fun. So I applaud their wanting to do that. Mr. Pearl, we know did not end the way that you would have hoped, but we are glad for your service and thankful, and we will be celebrating both you and Mr. Level at our December meeting. And I just want to say that I'm hoping that as we move forward in January, that we can all come together as a board and make the best decisions for all of our students and all of our staff without all of the noise of what's going on nationally. And remember that our priority is our students and our staff in this district. So I just wanted to add back congratulations. And again, Mr. Level, Mr. Pearl, be prepared for December. You just don't know what's coming.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Just welcome back to everybody. And also, it was great to start the morning off in our after Thanksgiving break with a fanfare at Liberty ECS this morning. So it's good to see those kids and thanks to Liberty ECS PTO for coordinating that with Leah. It went really well. That's it.
Mrs. Logan? Excuse me. The only thing I wanted to mention is that we are having a community conversation on Wednesday of this week at 6:30 here in this building on finances, as well as we have a thought exchange that is live currently, right, Betsy? To, for our community to enter any questions or that they might have about finances. And we're going to take a look at those as well as we enter into the community conversation. So lots of finance topics this week. We're going to talk about the five-year forecast tonight as well. So that's it.
Great. Our favorite part of the meeting, student spotlight. This is Fuller. And our honored guest.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're celebrating our OHSAA state champion Lakota East Senior, Joe Wilson. Joe is only Lakota's third athlete and East's first to win his golf state championship. During the first round, Joe shot a 69, which was the lowest score of the two-day tournament. His 74 the following day secured his title of co-champion, which he shares with a golfer from Northeast Ohio. Please welcome Joe Wilson.
Ever since I've been a kid, I've always dreamed about winning a state championship for my high school team. And that love for golf started with my dad. He put a little plastic golf clip in my hands and I would whack tiny plastic golf balls around my house when I was a kid. And I was probably making a mess of the house, but you know, they, my parents both loved it as much as I did. And coming into East as a freshman, I finally had an opportunity to accomplish that goal and try out that goal of winning a state championship. I had so much fun as a young freshman, learning from all my wonderful upperclassmen. And at East, we have been blessed the past couple of years with great players and a lot of great talent on that team. But talent only goes so far and great coaching takes even farther. And Coach Combs isn't here right now, but he has helped not only myself, but the team become such a dominant, a dominant program in the state for the past couple of years. And he's always been there for a helping hand, and I truly wouldn't be here without him. And throughout my high school career, we've had several opportunities at state to win a state championship. My freshman year, our team got second. I got tied for low freshman in the state. Sophomore year, our team got third. I got fifth as an individual. And last year, I got 18th. And throughout these four years, opportunities have arisen, have risen to accomplish this great goal, but yet we could never pull through. And yet we were always so close and always so on the edge. And that's why this year was so important to me, is that, you know, all those hours of working on the range and practicing and staying up late working on my game, you know, all those dreams of becoming a state champion were finally able to come true. And this was my last chance to leave my mark on East golf before I go off to college next year. And going into state, you know, I was really nervous. Again, all that, all that practice, all those years of dreaming of this big goal of becoming a state champion, had finally led to two days, and that's all I had. And that final round, I was very nervous. You can ask Coach Combs, you can ask my parents, I was definitely nervous. But sitting on the 18th green, watching my future teammate, Tofa Reed, tap in for his, his par, which means that we would both win a state championship together, running up to him, giving a big bear hug at the end, and solidifying that moment that we had both, you know, tears were rolling down our faces as the epitome of what just happened. That we had both finally overcome the obstacle of winning a state championship had crossed our minds. And it was a special moment that I know I'll remember forever, and I think he will as well. But when I stop and think about the memories that God has allowed me to experience over my past four years, just because of this team, this school, and this game, I feel so honored. Just the way he wrote it out of winning a state championship in my final season, in my final year here at East, and winning it with, with my future teammate and winning it in Columbus at Ohio State's home course. Having all my family, my mentors, and my friends there was truly something that I'm very thankful for, that God allowed me to do and accomplish with them in this final season. And at the conclusion of our high school season, we had the Fall Sports Awards and the whole team, we were all hanging out and kind of reminiscing on the year. And, you know, each player went around and kind of said how much this year meant to them. And we all thought about just, there'd be no better way to end it together as a family and as a brotherhood. And sitting there in that moment with Coach Combs and my five other brothers, and, you know, we, we kind of were just sitting there in silence. And it truly meant to me that, you know, that this team and what we have is more than any trophy. It's more than any score. It's more than any medal. But that love and the family and the brotherhood that we've built for the past four years is truly what, what high school golf and what Lakota East golf is all about. So I'm, I'm so blessed to be a part of Lakota and, and help you guys win a state championship. It feels awesome. Thank you.
So Joe, where is college?
Ohio State.
Ohio State, that's what I thought.
Next year.
Congratulations. That is awesome. We're so proud of you.
Thank you.
Both my kids graduated from East and we're actually friends with Coach Combs. So it's been fun to watch the golf program there develop to what it is. It's an amazing program. So congratulations.
Yeah, Coach Combs has done a great job. He's, he's scheduled early morning workouts and long practices. But you know, it's helped, it's helped each and every player perform at their best and, you know, help, help build a program that, you know, leaves a lasting impact on Lakota.
Awesome. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I was just going to say, well done. And, you know, obviously, not only do you make us proud and our district proud, but I'm sure you make your family and so many others in your community proud as well. What's your favorite course to play?
Oh, man. Obviously, I love Scarlet. I love OSU Scarlet up in Columbus. I love Ahala in Louisville, only an hour and a half, two hours away from here. We get to play it very often, and it is always in great shape. And it's a great track with, with a lot of great history.
Good to know.
Yeah. Thanks.
I'll just add too, congratulations. Any state championship on any level in any sport is, is a tremendous accomplishment. Congratulations to you and your family.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Very well spoken, and it's a tremendous accomplishment. I think the Ohio State is lucky to get you.
Yes, ma'am. I think we're all excited. We had three Ohio State commits in the state championship, and all three of us finished in the top four of the state championship. So we are trending in the right direction.
That's awesome. Keep up the great work at college. We'll be watching.
Thank you so much.
Joe, congratulations again. I really liked when you were speaking tonight that you said, my dream has always been to help my team win a state championship, not my dream is to win a state championship. So that's very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's leadership.
Anybody else?
Congratulations. I'm getting a picture. For just seeing great things at Ohio State.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the support.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Always my favorite part of the board meetings. Okay, we move on to board updates. Mrs. Schaefer, Butler Tech. Did I, oh, I'm so sorry. I did miss public. But we have no public comments, correct?
Correct.
Bob said there's nobody signed up? Now, Mrs. Schaefer.
The Butler Tech meeting was rescheduled due to a conflict with the treasurer. So it was this past Tuesday when I unfortunately was out of town. So I will have to update you at the next board meeting with what happened at the Butler Tech meeting.
Any questions for Mrs. Schaefer's? Policy Committee? We have second reads tonight, correct?
We do, yes. Was Mr. Vogelmann going to?
I think he was just letting you roll. There he goes.
Coming out, coming out from the secret sequestered booth, soundproof booth.
Bunker. We did have a policy meeting on November 15th, in which we reviewed the eight policies that were up for discussion based off of the October 11th board meeting, in which the committee went over those eight different policies, seven of which no changes were made. One that was updated is also part of the second read. So all the changes and reviews that were made are still up for second read.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Vogelmann? Nope, we're good. We got emails.
Thank you.
Legislative, do you want to start, Matt or Jenny?
Sure. Just want to congratulate Mrs. O'Connor, who at the OSBA meeting won the Southwest Region All Ohio School Board. Congratulations. I don't think we've had a meeting since then. We got to showcase you in the district. Also, another proud event for us at OSBA is when we have our student groups attend. We had four student groups. I don't think another district had more than that of the 100 student groups. We had four. So congratulations to Liberty Junior for their work around SEL, the Indy Recycle Program, our Cyber Academy, and Incubator EDU. I do also want to give a shout out to Charlotte McGuire, who is now, who's our rep on the state school board, who is now the state school board president as of just about a month ago-ish. So I did want to mention that. That's it.
Mrs. Logan? One of the updates that I'm going to give during the five-year forecast is, it's really not legislative, but it is, it's a change on a state level. So currently, the five-year forecast just has to be filed by each school district twice a year. And there are changes, and I've been on part of a small work group that's been looking at the changes that are going to be recommended by ODE and the Auditor of State's Office, which will say that each school district has to submit a board-approved five-year forecast twice a year. So that is a change that will be coming forward to all school districts. I mean, currently, I think each, most school districts put it on their board agenda for approval, but now it will be something that you cannot file a five-year forecast unless it is board-approved. Other than that, I mean, we've been watching a few bills that are being heard currently in the Senate that's already passed the House, which deal with valuation challenges. So we'll see where that goes after the holiday break that we just had. But there's been lots of, lots of testimony and action that's been happening around that. Some calls to action, I'm sure that you all have seen those come through on emails. So that's about it.
I have a few things. Go ahead. Yeah, I was just going to mention that we, which Mr. Miller mentioned, that we had been to a school board conference in the beginning of November and saw some, did some legislative sessions. I know that some of you got to meet with Senator Lang. I was unable to, but I heard it was a very productive meeting. So really, that's it. As you've already mentioned, we did have all seven board members in attendance, all of our current board members, and Mr. Adin, Mrs. Bodie, in a very short turnaround of a few days, joined us as well. So glad that they were able to be there. There are several highlights to legislative updates. I attended the OSBA trustee meeting that was held up there. Several great workshop sessions for professional development for board members. We did do a legislative visit. It was Mr. Miller and Mrs. Logan. Mr. Adi also joined us for part of that. And I know you were serving as the delegate at that, so you weren't able to get away. I also want to mention, in addition to offering congratulations to Mrs. Bodie and Mr. Adi, our local elections will have an incumbent returning in Liberty Township and a new township trustee, Mr. Manier. And in Westchester, we will have two incumbents staying on board and no new trustees there. So congratulations to those who ran. As far as the OSBA conference, there was a student achievement fair and trade show with nearly 500 exhibitors. And the conference was, OSBA was anticipating 6,000 attendees. I haven't heard the final number yet, but considering that that's the first time in two years, that would be terrific if we actually achieved those numbers. Jenny, I had a question. In one of the reports that I was reading, too, Dr. Fleeter had talked about December reports that will be coming out, talking about the school their funding formula, and that we would know from that conversation and those reports, whether or not it was working. Do you have any further thought on that?
So we did go through a major change with school funding. And with any major change, implementing that new formula into the payment system, which districts receive money from the state of Ohio twice a month. So they have been overhauling the system that sends those payments out twice a month. At first, we thought it was going to be September or October that we would see the new funding formula into that payment system. It's taking longer than they anticipated. And so now, December, the first payment in December, is when we're anticipating to see how it actually works for each district. I wouldn't say that we are waiting to see if it works, because it works. We're waiting to see how it specifically applies to each district. So every district can see all of the details on, here's the numbers for gifted. Here's the numbers for English language learners, special education, to see all of the details. Because right now, we don't have those details, but we're anticipating to see them by December.
Do you think we might have those in time for a December meeting? If so, I think it'd be great if we were.
Possible. It's possible. December 10th is the date that we're anticipating to receive them.
So if there's a chance to analyze that, perhaps we can do an update on that December.
At the December board meeting, it would be great to be able to give you some highlights of that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Other news, Christine Varwig, she's a member of the Toledo City School Board, was put into place as president-elect by the OSBA Board of Trustees. She'll take over as president in 2023. And again, Charlotte McGuire, congratulations. It's great to have her own regional representative as another voice at the state for us with her understanding of what our needs are. I think she'll do a terrific job. Couple of workshops coming up, just to mention to the board that might be of interest. This is a combined workshop from Wasbo, OSBA, and VASSA. It's a winter finance workshop on Friday, December 10th, if anyone's interested. That is an all-day event, and it is virtual. There's also a piece that might be interesting to those of us that are involved in community engagement and anatomy of a communications audit, and that's on Tuesday, December 14th, and that again is virtual. And lastly, there are two opportunities for kids and for some of our schools. OSBA is offering competition. It's honoring the work of Martin Luther King and its art writing and multimedia. And those will be accepted through December 20th through the Ohio School Board Association online link. And there's also, ODE is seeking, Ohio Department of Education is accepting nominations through December 15th to give out the Purple Star Award for military-friendly schools. And the award honors learning communities that show a major commitment to serving our students and families that connect with our armed forces. And that again is through the Ohio School Boards Association. So two opportunities that might be considered for our schools. That's all I've got.
Anybody have any questions, Legislative? Mr. Miller, you're up with your.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. And defer to Mr. Coney, who's going to give an update on the program of studies.
He wasn't in the soundproof booth.
He was not.
Yeah.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Miller, board, for the opportunity to present any changes to our program of study. Our program of study is the document that helps our high school students and junior high school students and their parents make choices about the upcoming scheduling season for next school year. This is an annual process that we go through. We take the old, the previous school year's document. We collaborate with the building principals, the counselors, department chairs, make any changes, adjustments to that. Sometimes we add new courses. Sometimes we add new requirements. This year's is a lot of reorganization and a lot of communication. Again, this document helps our students plan their futures forward, and it was really important for us to make sure it's as clear as possible and gives a lot of guidance to our families as they're making those decisions. Before I start, I would like to be, give a good thank you out to Andrew Wheatley and Justin Frost and Justin Wheatley, or Justin Wilson, who are too many Wheatleys. If, they are members of our team who have owned this project all the way through, worked very closely with our high school administration to bring this together. As I said, this is a lot of reorganization and information. The changes we've put in place for this year are really tied to our strategic plan, like everything else is. We've done a lot of work around what we call multi-tiered systems of support, which are, we call MTSS internally, which is a lot of our focus coming out of response to COVID that helps all of our students graduate with a, graduate with a purpose. We've also tried to work at making universally accessible electives for all of our students, so all of our students can experience as many courses as possible and don't feel like they're stuck in a certain pathway. We also want to make sure, one of the things we've learned from the pandemic is that our students crave more flexibility in their scheduling and what they have. So opening up flexible options for our students is really something that was driven by our students throughout that process, we want to be responsive to. With that in mind, we want to increase the number and diversity of students taking honors AP and CCP courses, College Credit Plus courses, which are dual enrollment courses, and adjusting our current courses as much as possible to reflect our portrait of a graduate and real-world expectation, something like every student taking virtual courses before they graduate from high school. At the end of the day, we always want to use our resources as efficiently as possible, and we found a lot of ways to be able to do that throughout this process. So it's very collaborative in nature. We reorganized the book. We essentially print a couple hundred copies of the actual book, and we have everything else online. We've reorganized where that is, what that looks like, to make it as user-friendly as possible. We've also gone to our department chairs and said, this is your opportunity to sell your courses in your, in your department. So we've had, asked them to put together a description of each of their departments and what their philosophy is, and what they really want to hope for students to be able to get from those courses they're taking. A large piece of this is some of the marketing that we did. We heard from parents that there was some confusion around what AP was and who was supposed to take AP courses and CCP and how they were different and what flexible options exist. We tried to put as much of that out there in front of people instead of waiting for the scheduling process. In what I shared out, I've linked through to some of the documents that will be included into the program of study that help explain what AP is and what CCP is and what the difference between those are and how that works. So those are all listed there. In terms of programming changes, financial literacy has become a state requirement. And so, which is fantastic for our students. It does require some adjustments for us on our part. So we're making those adjustments. One of those is just simply changing the name of one of our courses to simply Financial Literacy, so there's no confusion for families as they go through it. It's also added to our graduate requirements page. In Fine Arts, we removed prerequisites for a few of our main campus courses to allow more students to be able to take those, especially students who move into our district from outside during their main campus experience. It was difficult for them to be able to get in through a Fine Arts class to be able to take one of those other classes. So we removed that requirement. In English, we changed some course titles that were a little bit confusing for families. We changed the description of one of our Creative Publications classes at freshman level to have it more speak directly to what that is for students. And as you see, we've changed some of our prerequisites for our AP classes. What we've tried to do is try and say, we really want every student to try an AP class at some point or a CCP class at some point throughout their experience. We believe it's a rigorous experience. We believe that it prepares them for college. And we wanted to be able to remove barriers for students to be able to do that. And we have good research from the College Board that says that by changing those, those requirements to get into those classes does not necessarily change the outcomes or scores of those students. It simply opens the door for more students to try those kind of classes. In math, we added, we've been piloting a class, a course that the ODE has brought out called Mathematical Modeling and Reasoning. It has been a post-algebra II class the past couple of years. We've gotten to the point where we're through that pilot, and it is now an equivalency for Algebra II for students who take that. It's very real-world applications, hands-on, math-based. It's been a big push throughout the state of Ohio and at higher ed also to make math courses more hands-on and to have alternate pathways than just to calculus. Another course that is a little bit of a change in math is our Advanced Topics. So our Advanced Topics is for those students who have already, are beyond AP, who've taken AP Calc and BC Calc. And we have piloted the last two years with a teacher we've got on board who teaches that class. It now has college credit and is now called Advanced Topics in Math with Calc III and is taught through Cincinnati State CCP, which is a great opportunity for our students. Those are changes in math. In health, we made some changes to health requirements a few years ago. And so health is, was available to seventh and eighth graders and 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. It was not available to freshmen because of the way their schedule's set up. We have always had an online health class. We figured it was no sense in not offering that to the freshman level. Just makes sense to expand opportunities for those students as well. It's a solid course that students can take there. Science was a change that was brought to us by our science teachers. They had fewer numbers of students taking Biology II, Biology II, excuse me. And they thought that by breaking that into two semester courses that were a little bit more appealing to kids, that they might get more interest in those. So it's really just taking the curriculum and breaking into two chunks of courses as students go through that. In social studies, we are offering AP Human Geo at Geography at the freshman campus for ninth-grade students. It'll be on a small pilot basis this year, but that might be, again, a way of expanding opportunities for students to take some of those more rigorous courses. Economics, we're offering some courses virtually this year for the first time, just piloting some of those. Our economics class is a good pilot case for that. The right number of students taking it, the right interest in it. The course online is solid. We can offer it in person, virtually through our own teachers, via summer school, or virtually via CCP, which is a, which is a nice menu of flexible options for our kids. And again, some prerequisite changes. The only real new classes that we have that we're offering for this year is we had some requests for what we call universally accessible electives. Our counselor said we want courses that all students can participate in. Our counselor said we want courses that all students can participate in. And so we are working on yearbook, and we're working on Hope Squad being elective courses this year. They're limited to one section each, so there's not a gigantic staffing uptick with that. We'll simply see how those go and, and check on those throughout the course of the year. Any teacher can teach those, and the curriculum is pretty much in place already to be able to roll those out. We did, I did mention some of the virtual courses that we have. We are offering Health, Econ, and Photo I as purely virtual options. Those are, again, courses that students could take during their nexus bell, which is their, their study hall-ish bell that they have during the course of their day, a great chance for them to take virtual courses. So that's kind of a, a running list of everything. The only other point I would mention is that it's this point in time of the year that we would have to make a decision about the VLO or virtual courses, virtual students in general for next year. We've had success with the VLO this year. I know that sometimes people have, there's rumors about how poor the situation is or whatever else. Had a lot of success. We have a 86% success rate and parent satisfaction rate with the VLO. We have data coming in from last spring and from this fall that some of our VLO students actually perform as well or better than some of our in-person cohorts. It's been a very successful experience for a lot of our kids who need that for either medical reasons or for choice. And so we are able to move forward and continue to offer that. We'll combine that with the academy. They'll run under the same flexibility that allows the academy to exist. We'll have it for a small number of students. We'll have to manage through what the parameters of that look like. But we want to be able to take that option that's been successful, as long as there's not a huge cost involved with it, to be able to roll that forward, as I said, for a limited number of students who are, who are moving forward next year. We'll have more to come on that, but I did want to make sure that we mentioned that that is in our plans for, for next year. I know it was a lot. I apologize for sprinting through that. I can breathe now. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Questions there might be.
Keith, on the VLO option going into like a academy-type situation, would that mean that it would be its own school?
Right. So the academy right now works as a, through a blended waiver through the state, which allow, means that students have to participate 51% in person by having it operate as its own school that uses the online school parameters from the state of Ohio. It allows us more flexibility, so some of those students can participate in person at the academy, or they can be fully online and virtual. So that's the way it would, it would function as its own school.
So they wouldn't be tied to a homeschool anymore? It would be its own separate entity?
So we're working through what the, what it looks like on the transcript and on the diploma. So those are two different choices that we make there. I know that there's a lot of interest from families to say, I still want my diploma to say that I graduated from Lakota East or Lakota West. The transcript can be different. So there's a lot of logistics on the back end that will take us a few months to actually work all the way through. But we've been working closely with Mrs. Logan's department, Mr. Wesley's department, to make sure that our i's dotted and t's crossed.
On the, the health online for the freshmen, is that something that, like they could take that in addition to all of their other classes or?
They can't take more than seven.
That's what I wondered. Okay.
So that'll be the same way for main campus. So you can't take more than seven courses.
Okay. Anybody else question?
Could they take that though as a summer option?
They could. We, and that, that's been the case for a number of years. And we've had a number of students who have done that.
As you know, because we've talked about that before, the Advanced Topics in Math with Top Three, I think it's great we found a solution because before we've had, we've had kids hit a wall at the end of their junior year, and then we've not had an option for them when we. That's okay. We've, we've found a solution, so I think that's great. With the economics class that's virtual, is that just the regular class or would that also be the AP option?
That would be the regular class that is, yes, that's a regular class. Thanks.
And then with encouraging the college credit plus honors and AP, this is just, I, I know we're required every year to send out a gifted letter. And in that letter, I, I think we reworked it a couple of years ago, and it always, I, I think it's a little challenging how we have to write that because for high school, the way I read it, it's basically, thank you very much, your child is gifted in whatever subject or whatever area, but we don't provide services. If we're trying to get more people in the college credit plus honors and AP, I think we have an opportunity to perhaps put in that gifted letter, here's the myriad of options that your kid, your child can take advantage of and tell how many amazing options there are for these kids, that perhaps they're not specifically gifted options, but there are a tremendous number of options where they can still get amazing college credits and be very well-prepared for college, even though they may not be technically gifted services. So I would just encourage us to take advantage of that particle of communication where instead of it feeling as a parent that you're getting this letter and it basically says, fabulous, your child's gifted, we're not providing service, to instead say, here's something that we're trying to encourage this. Here's a great way to tell all the amazing things that are available because there really are amazing opportunities in college credit plus honors and AP. I don't think people truly realize how many credits kids can graduate with and start college truly as a junior.
It's an unbelievable experience we offer.
You know, we really do have kids at this point that are starting college as a junior with the credits that they receive without doing summer school, without doing anything beyond the regular academic day within Lakota with all the options that we have. So it just, I think we have an opportunity to take advantage in that letter.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Just to follow up to, maybe it's a follow-up to Julie's question. What else? As far as increasing the number and the diversity of students taking those courses, what are, what do you do to do that? Is it, besides sending this letter to the gifted kids, is it teacher recruitment? Is it marketing?
Yes, we've talked about it on, at the high school level, the junior high school level, and the elementary level, and we're doing different things at each of those levels. So one is recruitment. So we've talked to all the department chairs, talked to their teachers in their department about trying to identify, you know, it's going to that individual kid and saying, I think you've got this. I think you can handle this. I'd love to see you try this. And just having people believe in them. And then it's identifying those students at the junior high school level to maybe take a bridge class or take something. And it's really going back into fourth through sixth grade and saying, who are those kids? And can we look at the matrix a little differently and say, who do we provide opportunities to? And we'd love to be able to track that through for the next five to 10 years and say, how have we done at providing those? Because it's not just, it's not a one-time thing. To become part of your culture, that you want, you want to provide doors for kids. So I think it's all those.
That's great.
Yeah, thank you.
I was just gonna say, I think sometimes, I know I did this even with being on the board. As a parent, I was waiting for that staff member to say, my child should take advantage of this door or this window. And I think maybe we're getting better at that as staff members, but didn't realize that I needed to take that step as a parent. So I, I do think some, like, I think we're doing better as a district at doing it as, on the district side. But I also think sometimes parents need to ask that question when we don't realize as parents, we need to ask those questions.
Educating the parents as well.
It's, we've also found it's very intimidating for some parents to be able to go into a school and ask that, especially if they did not see themselves as that kind of student when they were in school. So trying to help those parents bridge that gap and have those conversations, that's really hard, but.
Right, yeah. So if I didn't know, others aren't going to know.
Right. That's good.
Anybody else?
Excuse me, I have several questions. We had a recent, not necessarily all connected closely, but we had a conversation in the recent DPC or President's Council meeting about the gifted program and the changes that were made to it. And I would like, as a board, for us to schedule an update and have a conversation about that in sometime in the near future. So just a placeholder for, I think it's a conversation we need to have to talk about some of those issues. I am very, very supportive of the idea of flexibility for our students and opening up those windows when we had to cut the period many years ago and being able to bring back some of those options for kids. I think it's terrific. So I appreciate that. I also am completely supportive of accessibility to a broader band of students. There were some comments that you made, and not as a criticism, Keith, but just some things that kind of triggered thoughts for me around adjusting real-life expectations and adjusting the portrait of a graduate. And I asked myself, how are we maintaining rigor as we talk about changing expectations? I'm not trying to understand what you mean by that term. And so I would ask, are we still requiring the same level of rigor for our students? And I'm, I'm not putting that out there as something that you have to answer right now, but I would like to get some information and specifics about that. How are we doing that?
In terms of the instruction going on in the classroom?
When you say changing expectations, I'm not sure I understand exactly what that means, so perhaps some further detail on that?
I, I think I was referring to student expectations, some of the students not expecting themselves to be a honors-level or AP-level student, if I misspoke. And the requirements that we're talking about, requirements to enter the, the class. So I'd love to follow up on that. Probably more in-depth than what we can provide tonight. Happy to.
I would be, I would appreciate that. And I would also ask for, you mentioned that you're getting back some data on the VLO program. How students are doing, how their, what their achievement looks like.
Sure.
Can we get some more specifics on that as well?
Sure. Be happy to.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anything else from Mr. Coney? Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to mention too, just briefly about different topic. But one that I always address, especially late, and that's our COVID numbers. So our COVID numbers are going up. We are seeing an increase, especially at the, at the lower-grade levels. We've had two hotspot buildings, for lack of a better term, Cherokee and Heritage. Sometimes it's families at both. So we are watching that. Thanksgiving is a little bit different because we only had two days last week. So we're seeing some numbers roll back in, and I would think probably by Wednesday of this week, we'll have a better handle on the positivity rates going in. But I know that today we had 55 out of 17,000 that were COVID-positive from contacts last week. But again, most of those are at the, at the younger buildings. We're watching that. It's something that we're always dealing with. In fact, I have another Zoom call tomorrow, Wednesday. So more to come. So I wouldn't say we changed anything right now, but it's something that we're watching. We continue to watch every day.
Any questions from Mr. Miller on that? Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Logan, it's your time to shine.
So it's five-year forecast time. And we do have two screens now.
I know, I like this.
So thank you to Mr. Wesley and his team for getting those installed for us. So five-year forecast, just, I feel like I repeat myself a lot of times on the five-year forecast, but I think it's important to state a lot of things every time. Why do we do a five-year forecast? Well, it, it is a state requirement. They require us to file a five-year forecast. School districts only have to file a five-year forecast in the state. Townships, counties, they, they do not. School districts do. And so the five-year forecast doesn't just forecast, it also provides history. So it provides your three most recent fiscal years, which for us would be 19, 20, and 21. And then it also looks forward for five years, including the current year, which we're in fiscal year 22. So this year we've added fiscal year 26, which just, every time it's like, oh my gosh. We'll never get to that fifth year, and we always somehow do get to that fifth year. But we do utilize it as a district for planning purposes. So it's not something that we file, we shelve, and we never use. We look at this quite frequently. It is a snapshot financial report. So the only thing I know is that based on the assumptions we have made for this forecast on this date, these are the numbers associated with it. If something changes and an assumption changes, I mean, Linda mentioned that, you know, December 10th, we're expecting those new financial reports. Those numbers will change. So this is only as good as what we know today. I also mentioned that they're going to be changing the rules, and we can only file board-approved five-year forecast. So that's going to be coming forward as well. And I know that, you know, we killed a few trees because there were a lot of printed-out five-year forecasts on the table out front. It's also on board docs, anyone who wants to see it, as well as it will be on our webpage. It's an 18-page document. And so anyone who wants to know how any of these numbers were arrived at, all of the assumptions and all of that details, they are there. So if you have a sleepless night and you need something to help you fall asleep, it's there. The other thing that we have added to the five-year forecast is the very last page of the document, we have added links because there are quite a few other financial resources that are out there for our community. And so we felt like the five-year forecast is the one that we talk about the most. And so we went ahead and linked a whole lot of those other resources, which include a link to our Treasures webpage, our CAFR, our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, our audit, if you want to see that, our budget, monthly reports. We did a flyer for Back to School this year, which was focused on finances, a lot of financial information there. My favorite is a video by one of our students who talks about school finances, and he does a much better job explaining it than I do. So that's there for everyone. So the first thing, when you take a look at the five-year forecast, is it's going to start with revenues, the money that comes in. And so the notable revenue assumptions, I'm not going to detail all these 18 pages. I'm just going to point out the things that I think are notable. So our, our biggest revenue source is our tax revenue. And so for 2024, because we just went through a reevaluation in 2020, which we're collecting on in 2021 tax year, which is calendar year. In 2024, we will go through an update. And so we have projected 5% increase for Class 1, which is our residential and agriculture. And Class 2, 1.5% increase, that's our business taxes. And I believe these are pretty conservative. I want to say that. We are also, when we're looking at state-funded, state funding, all we have right now is what our Legislative Service Commission predicted based on the new funding formula. So it's in there. When we see the actual numbers in December or January, we, they will change. So this is as of what we know right now. And again, we have predicted a half a percent increase for the years after this biennium budget, which is 2022 and 2023. So if you look at the five-year forecast, we actually have three biennium budgets included in the forecast. So there's some uncertainty there. Several of the categoricals, and what I mean by categoricals is like special education, English language learners, gifted education. I think I mentioned special ed. So those, there were some of those categorical funding that were unrestricted, meaning they were included in your overall money that you got from the state, but you were not, you didn't have to specifically spend it on that exact categorical. Now they have really restricted a lot of those monies. And so we talked about gifted earlier. There are major restrictions, restrictions around gifted funding to the point of if we don't spend it on gifted, they could call back that money. We're not going to have a problem spending, we're not going to have a problem spending any of these monies, but the state legislature just wants to make sure that we are spending the money for the purposes that they have identified. When we talked about tax revenue and that being our biggest revenue source, I do want to just kind of go over, our total assessed valuation for the district is $3.6 billion. This is a graph just to kind of show some history and our total valuation. Our total valuation, we're made up of West Chester and Liberty. So when you take a look at those two townships, and I get a lot of questions about this. So West Chester makes up about sixty-five percent of our total valuation and Liberty is thirty-five percent. When you take a look at the split, how much is class one residential agriculture? And then how much is our business? Seventy-six percent is residential and agriculture. And our business is twenty-four percent. So that's the split of what that looks like. The other thing I want to point out on this graph is if you take a look at this and you look at two thousand nine, you're going to see it went up two thousand nine and then, well, we all remember what happened. And so we start seeing that valuation creep downward. And the lowest it reached was in two thousand thirteen. And then we're going to see that it took nine years for our total valuation in this community to get back up to where we were in two thousand nine. So in two thousand eighteen, we finally surplus surpassed that two thousand and nine total valuation. And so now you'll see that healthy, our, our total valuation is healthy. I mean, you can drive around and see all the new construction and everything, but, but I thought that chart, I don't usually include this, but I thought that was useful to put in this time. We talk about the new funding formula. It is, uh, funding where educated. So if you take a look at our, our total sto- student enrollment, what was included is the students who were taking advantage of scholarships and being educated elsewhere, those are being direct funded now. And so that student count will be subtracted from our total student count that we get funded for, as well as open enrollment. The students who are leaving us to be, um, open enrolled somewhere else. But the students who are coming to us, open enrolled in will now be included in our student count. So net, our student enrollment will look lower um, based on this information. But as Mr. Miller can tell you, overall, we are seeing more students come to us. It has far surpassed what our demographic study was back in two thousand and nineteen. So when we take a, a look at total revenues that we have predicted, um, again, I go all the way back to two thousand ten because I think that was a pivotal year for us. Um, and just take a look at what, what is the total revenues that we're predicting in this forecast? What have they been? And what percentages increase are we looking at? So you're going to see there, it's, you know, two thousand twenty-three, two point one, but then after that, it's lower than two percent. So now we're going to move to the expenditure side. And our, we're a service organization, our largest expense is going to be our, our people. So wages and benefits are going to be the two largest expenditures that we have. We do have both union contracts that began at the beginning of this fiscal year and those go through two thousand twenty-four. So included in those contracts, uh, for our LEA is a, um, two percent increase on the base and a one point nine seven percent COLA. And our LSSA, our support staff is two and a half percent with a one percent COLA. I will say also the COLA, when we look at, um, predicting these, we have also taken a little look at what is that actual cost of the COLA? And we have also applied that into the predictions as well. Moving beyond the, um, bargaining unit or, or contracts that we have in place, beyond twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six, we're assuming a three percent increase, which kind of goes along with what we have seen. Our healthcare rates, we are seeing an increase this year, um, the first time in a long time. Um, I also have that on the agenda for you, um, to approve, going back to Anthem. Um, it's eight and a half percent that'll take, uh, effect January one. Our dental did go down by two percent. Um, and then we are estimating a four percent moving forward beyond twenty twenty-two. Purchased services, um, you know, we've talked about direct funding of those scholarships and community schools. What that actually looks like dollar wise. So when you look at your purchase services line item, you're going to see these things not included in there. So we talked about state funding. Well, this is the other part of state funding. State funding used to give you the money for those students they included in your account and then they would reduce the amount for the scholarship, which was always more than they gave you, um, and send it to, um, the scholarship providers. So five point eight million dollars in expenditures will not be in this forecast because of the direct payment of these scholarships. So when you take a look at our total expenditures and the percentages, um, in, the increases that are predicted, if you look at two thousand twenty-two and you see point four percent increase this year, a big reason why it's so low of an increase on our total expenditures is because we're taking out almost six million dollars of purchase services because of those direct payments. And then as you look forward, um, you know, the average is, is below three percent that we're predicting going forward. So this is the chart that puts the revenues, the expenditures, cash balance, all on one chart. Last time we talked, the spending deficit was going to occur two years earlier. So it's now being pushed out to FY twenty-four. But I also want to say that, remember I mentioned, we're using conservative estimates on the revenue. We also, there's a whole lot we still need to know about state funding. Um, we have typically pushed that spending deficit out by a year. Whenever we look at this, we have been lucky enough that actuals come in better than what we're predicting and we've been able to push that off. So now currently in this forecast, it's been pushed off to FY twenty-four. I think the other thing that we need to celebrate is that we have operated with a balanced budget for ten years in this district, a decade, a, a decade. And, and I think we need to, to celebrate that. We also need to talk about that whole conversation. And we've talked about it before. We have board policy that sets a ninety day limit on our cash balance to not fall below. When we start looking at, at this five year forecast and even in two thousand twenty-six, it's predicted with nearly six months, um, of a cash balance. So I, I just think there's some opportunities to start talking about, um, for the district, there's a lot of further diving deeper into this. I promised myself I wasn't going to bring it up, but I'm going to bring it up. One of the topics we talk about a lot is class sizes in our elementary. Um, and I even put it in the notes. There are things that we talk about and so priorities, I believe that it's a good time. It's always a good time to have a conversation around what are the priorities of the district. It's time to revamp our strategic plan. And so this all is part of that conversation. Um, because quite honestly, the budget is just aligning the resources to your priorities. So taking a little look at those priorities and making sure that your assumptions are aligned to that, um, it's a good time to have that conversation. So also one of the things that, um, I did as well is I just tried to look forward beyond the five years and say, what if we made some assumptions? And we estimated that our revenue would grow by one percent each year and our expenditures would grow by three percent each year. How long could our cash sustain us? If we did nothing else, how long could the cash sustain us? Based on that, um, in two thousand thirty-one, you would run out of money. And in two thousand twenty-nine, you would fall below that ninety day threshold, which would mean, hello, you got to do something. You, and I would say you would need to do something before, but those are those triggers that are really big red flags. But, um, in summary, again, balanced budget for a decade. We've pushed off the anticipated spending deficit to two thousand twenty-four. You've also got a rainy day fund that you've established that's got seven million dollars in it. And again, we're still learning and the fair school funding plan is still being put into the model and we'll know all those numbers, um, in the next few months. So I, my job is easy tonight. I mean, I, I don't have bad news, Mr. Miller, to include in this, um, forecast. So
We like that.
Questions?
Questions for Mrs. Logan?
I need it was too long.
I, I don't have a question. I just have admiration for you and your team and the hard work that you put into making sure that this runs this way and that we've had a ten year of a balanced budget. So I just really appreciate that.
A, a lot of teamwork.
Right.
Board superintendent, executive team, it's, it takes everybody.
And I do think that maybe early next year, January, February would be a good time for the board to delve into a deeper dive into finances, like you said, because we know there's some things we want to do and priorities and we have the whole master facility plan up and running sometime soon. So questions for Mrs. Logan?
Do you know how this compares to an equivalent document for the townships? Do they have an equivalent document? And if they have similar cash reserves, a balanced budget, if they have deficit spending?
So there, if there are five year forecasts that are done by just townships in general, it would be because that's their expectation, their local expectation. I do not believe our local townships do a five year forecast. They do, it's an internal document that's not shared. As far as a spending deficit or a surplus, as far as the townships, our five year forecast is based on our general operating fund. They have several different funds that they operate with. And if we compared our general fund to their general fund, I'm, I'm not sure that they have gone a decade with their general operating fund without a spending deficit, but I would want to confirm that. I would want to confirm that. Um, I do know that both of our, our townships are financially stable as well. So our residents should feel very good about all of us being fiscally responsible.
Um, I just have a few comments. First of all, you know, Jenny, as usual, thank you for all the work that you and your team do to, um, put this together. There's a significant amount of time that goes into preparing these documents. And while it's just now a law that we have to approve it, we know that that's been practiced over many, many, many years for Lakota and that, um, it's just another way that we work towards, um, being transparent with our community, um, and helping them better understand how their dollars are spent. Couple of things, um, first off, uh, I, again, I think we do have to celebrate the ten years. Those of us that have lived in this community, um, for our entire life, understand the plight of the continuous levy cycle that we were faced with and a lot of that had to do with growth and expansion through the nineties. Um, but we hit a hard crash, right? In two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve in that area. And by the actions of that board administration and getting the levy passed, we are where we are now. Ten years is a big deal. It's a huge deal for this community. So I applaud everybody at this table and previous tables that, um, made that happen. At the same rate, I think it's important for us to recognize and understand that the, the funding model in the state of Ohio, um, it does not necessarily celebrate those that can go the longest. The reality is to go long means that eventually you're going to have to cut programs. And so we are going to have to go to our community. I won't be at this table when that happens. Um, but I'm hopeful that the new board, um, and boards after that don't have the mindset of how long can we go without? Let's just cut, 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 because we know what cutting programs does to the opportunities for our students. Also, we have to recognize that our levy dollars do not, um, account for inflation. And so if anybody's been to the grocery store in the last, uh, few months, you recognize that your bills are going up, the bills here are going up. Um, supply, um, issues are creating more havoc on our budgets than ever. And so I just say all that because we need to celebrate the ten years, but we also need to be extremely realistic, um, that we can't keep saying that goal is fifteen years, twenty years, twenty-five years. Because I know that what that's going to do to my daughter's education and I don't want that to happen. I, I also want to say that, um, while I applaud the work that has been done for us to have a seven million dollar rainy day fund. And what I look here is nearly a hundred and eighteen million dollars in a cash balance. It's too much cash. I've sat here for four consecutive years saying we're hoarding too much of our taxpayer dollars. And some of us applaud that. Some of us say that's the way it should be. Let's grow that piggy bank as much as we possibly can. Um, I say quit taking my tax money if you're not going to invest it in programs and student opportunities. Um, we're three months over what our minimum, our ninety days is on our board policy. I'm not saying wasted. I'm not saying blow it. I'm just saying let's invest it for a better Lakota in the future because I believe in the mindset that the best is yet to come. To Ms. Logan, to your point, there are so many things that we could be doing. Again, I see how many kids are in my daughter's class. Yes, we need fewer kids in our classes. Yes, we have to invest in infrastructure to do that. Yes, the needs of our students continue to increase and we can't just keep educating them the way we've done it for decades. And that's going to take money and that's going to take an investment by, um, us in the money that we have and our community. And so again, I think that if we look at this and we start knocking on the narrative of saying, gosh, we're deficit spending three years out. We need to start reducing one point two, three point three, six point three million. Again, we know how that's going to happen because again, I'm, I'm pretty sure that the conversation won't be use that cash balance. It'll be reduced, but keep grow that cash balance. And, um, I think that our community, and again, I won't be at this table. I think our community should be as passionate at that microphone as they were about a month ago about CRT and other things when that starts to happen. Just put that out there. Um, again, the next thing I'm going to say too, I'm looking at you Jenny, but this isn't for you because I, I know that you probably agree. This is the best time that we have to address the master facilities plan. It stopped because of COVID. It stopped because of those among us that didn't want to have the hard conversation with our community about what it means to invest in our schools because there's fear about levies. Um, again, it's the reality that we exist in. We have the largest asset of buildings and facilities in Westchester and Liberty Township and every year they age more and more. Um, we have a unique opportunity, as Ms. Logan has stated over and over again, in two years because of our bond debt roll-off, we have a unique opportunity to be able to invest in the future of our school system. To shy away from conversations about facilities that are going to meet the future needs of our students is irresponsible. is irresponsible and I hope that the future board doesn't shy away from it because they don't want to say the word levy. Again, I'm going to be at the microphone as a parent with a childless system, looking at you and saying to each of you, why do we have a cash balance and why are you not taking this opportunity? And I'm looking at Mrs. uh O'Connor at this moment. Um, this, the last point I'm going to make is that and and you hit the nail on the head, uh, Ms. Logan. Um, we have priorities. We have a strategic plan. How are we investing in that plan? And I and I've said this for four years now and I'll continue to say, say it from the other side of this table. Yes, there are things that we need to defund. There probably are. There are things that we've been doing over and over for the years and we need to be have a critical eye about what we're going to do and how we're going to um reassess where the money goes. At the same rate, what are we doing to invest in priorities that are going to, again, change the future of our students and help change the future of our students? Looking at that cash balance, that's what we should be doing or that's what you all should be doing is having those conversations. What are the priorities and how are we going to fuel those priorities? And again, the conversation shouldn't be, um, how do we go as long as we possibly can without having to go to our taxpayers? Because again, there's accountability piece to that as well, going to our taxpayers. There's an accountability piece there to ha- see what they say about what we're doing and how we're doing it. Um, I love that you gave the years um about our cash balance running out, 2029, 2031. I was trying to in my head, think about what grade my daughter would be in. When I started the board, I didn't have any kids in the school system. They were coming up through the pipeline and I'm I'm um, I I look at that year and I just say, you know, it's incredible. But again, I kind of hope that we spend some of that cash way sooner than that 2029 year. And the best thing about going off the board is people can call me a tax and spend liberal all they want at this point, but the reality is that's not what I am. I'm a realist. And I love my kids and I love this community. I've been here my entire life. And I sure hope that this new board that sits here actually has a mindset of investing in this district versus scarcity mindset and let's not go to our community and tell them what we absolutely deeply are passionate about and why we need that money to make it happen. So again, Ms. Logan, thank you for all your work. It's been an absolute pleasure. This is my final five-year forecast to sit with you. Um, and I'll just say, and I and then I'll stop, um, to those in our community that don't realize the talent that you have. And I'm I'm telling you, I I am in education. I see many treasures. I see superintendents and I'm not talking about Matt now, I'm talking about you. Um, you, you are, you are high quality and the most professional that they come. And you are the main reason why we are where we are right now. Despite the distraction by board members, you and your team are the reason where we are. And so just from my heart to just say thank you to all that you do and thank you for giving my children the opportunity and the priorities in this district that we have. So thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Julie, have anything? Linda? Anybody?
I have a few comments. Thank you. Jenny, my belief in your numbers and my trust in the information you provided is, as always, absolute. So my comments are not a reflection on you in any way, shape or form. I trust the information you provided. I also having tracked for many years, your percentages in terms of how accurate you are at the end of the year are always stunningly close and I appreciate that. I feel like we get very accurate information. So that being said, my comments have nothing to do with your abilities. I think it is about decisions that this board, this team makes, excuse me. And I'll I'll look at a bigger picture. Um, as we know, these are as accurate as the next year, but we have to go on. This is the information we have. So I have to look at the bigger picture of what I would do in my own home. Our revenue through the course of this seven-year forecast, seven years pieces of information that we have here. Uh, revenue increases by 11.1% and expenditures increased by 20.79%. And that isn't sustainable. Regardless of anything else, that's about our spending. That is not about what we have in the bank and what we can do with that. That's not a sustainable pattern and I don't believe that that's what our taxpayers expect of us. I'll take just one example of um what we've done and I think we have to look at our staffing issues. I think you mentioned that in the assumptions uh part of the presentation, Jenny. And I agree with many points that you made. I think we absolutely have to consider things like our teacher-student ratios. Uh, we know that our staffing needs are the very biggest expense and certainly the biggest increase that we have over time. Again, going back to the same forecast, our increase in personal services, employee retirement and insurance benefits over this period of time go up 4.05% or 28.39%. And our revenue, 11.1% or 1.6 every year. Again, not sustainable and an issue we have to consider. And I do agree that I think we have particularly in some grades, we have a a teacher-staff, a teacher-student ratio issue. I am concerned about our younger grades and I think we need to address that. That's not the only issue we need to address. We have a a facilities issue. I agree with Mr. Level about that. But I am looking at that not just as an opportunity, but also as a potential liability and how do we pay for a $206 million plan? And 118 million stacked up against that, depending on what we decide to do, doesn't begin to cover the cost without returning to taxpayers. So I don't see that 118 million as sitting there waiting for nothing to happen with it. And when you talk about 2031 running out of cash, I'm fairly sure that after we get done with next year, we will not be uh looking at that kind of a timeframe in any way, shape or form. I think it will be much sooner than that based on what we do with our facilities. I also believe that we need to consider that our forecast would look much different without the federal dollars that we've had incoming over the last two years. And rather we have acknowledged that. I know you've said it before in public, Mrs. Logan, but that has made a difference. Not because we've done anything different in our spending pattern, but because we had unexpected revenue from federal dollars. I can't agree with an imbalanced budget. Uh, I am in agreement with one-time expenditures that can be taken out of the 118 million dollar reserve, particularly if we're looking at facilities, but there has to be a need versus a want. There has to be a reason for doing it. What I would say back to Mr. Level is if we believe number one, that we have too much money, then we should be returning it to our taxpayers. And the other part that I would say, Mr. Level, is you're calling for accountability back to taxpayers. And I would say that the recent election that we just had was exactly that. It was our taxpayers holding us accountable. So again, Jenny, I am in agreement with your forecast, but I cannot support imbalanced spending in our forecast. I do think it's a discussion the board is long overdue for and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, couple of comments. Just uh give me a second.
For have anything?
Now, I'll let, hold on. I want to just address a few comments because I think it's really important. Um, number one, inflation's going to happen and yes, we all manage our our budgets within our house. For the most part, those of us that are working, I recognize there's a part of the community that is um a fixed income. Our wages will go up over time. The reality is inflation occurs and so we have to recognize that that happens as well within the district. And so, yes, there'll have to be reductions that happen, we'll have to balance, but that's not the only thing that you do. The second thing is, is that there is a real cost to maintaining our buildings. And yes, 200 million sounds like a lot of money and it is a lot of money, but to do nothing is going to cost this district significant on the backend. Additionally, when we talk about a master facilities plan, which we've talked about over and over again, it's the understanding that is there an opportunity to right-size our district? We're operating 23 buildings. Is there an opportunity with some of our older buildings to become more efficient? So there are a lot of those conversations that need to occur. So I just want to make sure that part of the conversation is starting that master facility process up again, alright? The other thing is, I don't think, from what I could tell with the election and being a part of the election, I didn't hear the word financial accountability at all in that election. There are pretty much two bullet points that were being hitting the nail on the head there. So again, I don't think there's any mandate by the community there.
Julie, I would disagree with you, Mr. Level. I hear financial accountability all the time from our community. You have to be listening.
In your echo chamber, yes.
Okay, Mrs. Schaefer. Let's give Mrs. Schaefer a chance to talk.
Again, there are clearly different perspectives and different ways of looking at this. First of all, on the facility plan, I keep hearing this 206 million dollar facility plan. I was under the understanding that we were not done with our facility plan. We were still looking at what that facility plan was going to be and what it was going to look like. If there is a 206 million dollar facility plan that is cemented and that we are moving forward with, I would like to see that because I am not aware of a 206 million dollar facility plan that we're moving forward with. Part of doing a facility plan, I agree, was also with potential savings in our day-to-day operations. But I, it troubles me every time I hear of a $6 facility plan when we are still in the process of building a facility plan. But it hasn't been done.
And I believe what I said was potential liability. Until we have the needs versus the wants and understand what that is, we have to look at that as the possibility. That was the book of all the changes that we could make. It was 206 million dollars. I've been asking for needs and wants for five years now.
So I I just think we have to be careful with setting the expectation that it's a 206 million dollar facility plan because I think that was not my understanding of that there was ever any expectation that there would be 206 million dollars spent on a facility plan as I looked at that book. So I guess it was, it's different interpretations of how we saw that perhaps. Um, again, I appreciate the work on this forecast. I appreciate the changes in the numbers and when the deficit spending will occur. I think again, it's, it is a matter of what we prioritize. For me, class sizes right now are something that I would prioritize as an investment that I believe is worth making. I think it is something we continually hear from our community is an important investment um to be made. And something when I look at the cash balance we have on hand, I think is an important investment that we make. But I'll just leave it with, I appreciate the work that was done on this five-year forecast. I appreciate the standing that we're in on this forecast. I think most districts in the state would be incredibly grateful to have the standing that we do within this forecast, the history and the future um of where we are. So and I, when it comes to the wage growth, I think that, again, the single most important outcome to the success of our students is the quality of our educators. And I think it's important that we maintain competitive salaries and a competitive benefit package to attract and retain top talent. And I think that's what we've continued to do in each negotiation. And I hope we continue to do so.
Any other questions or comments from Mrs. Logan?
Thank Jenny and her team for the the work and and I'll just add too, I think it's good too that, you know, we we made a lot of copies. You know, it's online. Um, you have the links, you know, set up too. I I think that's, that's so important for the the myth out there that, you know, there's no transparency. I think this is pretty transparent. So thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions from Mrs. Logan, we will move on to new business. Does anybody have any new business?
I do. Um, so one of the things I think we've all recognized over the course of the last year or so is the um overall increase in public records requests. And so I'm not here to um say that that's bad. I think that that is an appropriate tool for our community to use to hold us accountable and to increase um transparency in regards to how we operate. Um, what I am going to say though is that we recognize as well that we have significantly increased the cost. Public records requests are not cheap. It takes a lot of our staff time to pull together. Um, and we get the opportunity to see every request that comes through our board email. Um, all I would say is that the same transparency that the public records request provides for our residents, I believe on the backside of that, it should be transparent to our entire community. I would like to ask that on the treasurer to report each board meeting, that there be an ongoing list of the public records requests that have been requested from the district. Um, the person who requested them and then um what the request was for. Um, other districts are doing this in the tri-state now as a way to, again, increase transparency between the board and the community and the community and the board. I also think it's important for our community to understand and see um the types of requests that are being asked of within the district. So I would just put it out there and just say as um we head into a new year and a new board, I think it's um an appropriate step in maintaining and um actually growing transparency so that we can all see those public records requests.
Thank you. Any discussion from Mr. Level? Any questions? I will make a note of that.
Did I create an undue burden for you, Jenny, or is that something you could easily do since you track all the records requests currently?
We are currently keeping um a spreadsheet that tracks all of that information. So I think it would just be a matter of making sure the information that's on that spreadsheet is the information that you would like to see and just adding it to um to my items on each board agenda.
It would, I don't know how far far back we want to go, but I guess at the next meeting, whatever's on your spreadsheet, if you want to go ahead and put that on. Um, and then we can just move forward from there.
You could at least start with the beginning of this.
That's perfect.
I suggest that we leave this until the new board comes on in January to have a discussion. You know, I'm afraid that it might intimidate the public rightfully that have a reason to ask for information. I'm afraid that might be intimidating. And I'm not sure why we would do that to help people out. So I'd like to have a discussion once the new board comes in.
I disagree. I think for the next meeting, it should be on there. I think it's a great opportunity to increase transparency with our community.
I can send you the spreadsheet so that you all can take a look at it.
I don't think that's necessary.
Next board meeting.
Go ahead and set the spreadsheet, Jenny, just so we have it in advance.
So you can see what it
what it entails.
I would like to have further justification for it. But I'd also like to understand what exactly other, what other organizations or districts might be doing that, what the reasoning was for it.
Great.
I mean, like you, as you said before, any email that's sent in is public record. So you read that email that a person had sent into the board out at a board meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
And they had probably sent that in, not expecting that to be read out at a board meeting, but any request that's sent in is automatically by the virtue of being sent in public record itself. So.
Anybody could do a public records request for all the public records.
Which we have that.
All we're doing is putting them on the treasurer's report, which I still would like to see those in December.
Because so we we've gotten public records requests for public records before, so.
Yes. And then in January, if the new board determines that they don't want to be transparent and they choose to take those off the board agenda, then they can so do that.
Jenny, do we need to motion that? Do we need to? How do we need to handle that?
It's a darn good question.
I I don't believe that there's a motion that would need to be done to request it. It's an informational piece. Would not be anything that would be voted on at each meeting. I could also ask Brody, who is the attorney that helps us with these, for some further clarification. And I can also reach out to a few of the school districts that I know that's doing this currently and find out the history and what the, what steps they took before it actually.
I wouldn't want it to be seen as an intimidation factor against our community. So I would appreciate any further information you can get.
I don't. I think it's important to recognize too that it's our our community's tax dollars that are going to pay for attorneys to so file these, or to um respond to the public regulatory test. So again, it's it's full transparency on how are your tax dollars are being spent and why they're being spent.
Okay, any further questions on that? Alright, we are at the point, um, board action item, we need a motion to approve the second rate of the policies.
I would ask that we pull three policies to load on separately, please.
Okay, which policies?
0165.2.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
0165.2, special meetings. 0169.1. 0169.1. It's public participation in board meetings. And 5350, which I believe is student health, student mental health.
Can I ask why we're pulling those? Are we just voting on them separately? Voting them separately? Right. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the policies with the exception of the three that Mrs. O'Connor just pulled out.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Logan, will you call the roll, please? When you get a minute.
Mrs. O'Connor, yes. Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
No.
No, on the policies?
On separating it.
No, we're voting on.
Making a motion to separate.
We're voting on.
Yes, yes. I thought we were making a motion to separate.
No need to make a motion to do that. Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Now I need a motion on the three policies that we've pulled out.
Can you repeat those again? 165.
165.2, 169.1, and 5350.
Do you need to vote on those three separately?
Yeah. I'm fine if it's voted, voted as a block.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve those three.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Mrs. Logan, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor? Mrs. Casper?
Yes. I need a, a motion to approve treasurer's recommendation action items A through E. I would ask that we pull D for a separate vote. Okay, I need a motion to approve treasurer's action items A, B, C, and E. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Logan, when you're ready?
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor, did you second that I wrote down?
I did.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes. I need a motion to approve item D under treasurer's recommendation, the five-year forecast. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Logan, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor? Mrs. Casper?
Yes. I need a motion to approve superintendent recommendations A through D.
So moved.
So.
Go ahead Brad.
Second.
When you're ready, Mrs. Logan, we have discussion, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought.
I'd like to talk about the proposed sub-rate adjustments. Under A, personnel items.
A, personal, personnel.
So my question was, uh, in the information we provided, we didn't have any comparison to what other districts are paying our sub rates. And knowing that we're having trouble finding subs, we've actually been hearing about classes brought, two or three classes brought together in media centers. Because we don't have subs and I don't think that's a great learning environment for our students at all. So my question to you would be, since we're having a struggle finding subs, how do we compare to other districts if we're paying at 100?
If we didn't make this, if we didn't make this adjustment, then we are, we are the lowest and continue to be the lowest in the cog.
If we don't make the adjustment or if we?
If we don't.
We're the lowest, aren't we?
Correct.
So 100 does not take us past being the lowest?
No, it, it does take us from being the lowest.
Yeah, I misunderstood that too. I, he, we are, we're the lowest before the increase. Once we have the increase, we will no longer be the lowest.
That's true.
But we're so close to the lowest.
We are.
Because everyone else is adjusting up as well.
Correct.
So.
And the pool is still the same.
So is there a consideration that given how many of our fully paid teachers are being pulled from their regular assignment to act as substitutes, better to even increase it beyond the $100? Or we just think that that's?
I'm not sure we'll see that much of a bump, but maybe when we get to 100, we can see if that does help. And if it does, then maybe go up from there.
I actually have heard, I have friends in two or three other districts that said that they, their subs not considerably more, but more than we do, and they still can't get them.
So that was my original question, was should we consider more than 100?
Um, more than I want to do that. I just don't know. I just don't know. I don't think that's going to solve the problem. I just don't think the people are there.
I just don't think we have the pool is what I'm hearing too. I don't know.
I think the other opportunity that we are currently looking at, Matt was probably getting ready to say this. Um, the recent legislative change that allows us to um hire substitutes in a different way, they've changed those requirements. And so we've started having discussion around should we modify our requirements um to try to increase that pool?
You're talking about the non-degreed requirement?
So.
Correct. Opening up the ability to.
The easy explanation that we just talked about this morning would be that student teachers uh who mid-year or they still have to student teach in the um spring, that would be the, the group we would tap into.
Well.
And we're trying to hire ahead of people also.
Well, I appreciate that you're thinking about it creatively, but I am willing to look at a greater addition if you think that makes sense to do that.
I'm more than willing to try at this point.
As we have that discussion, I know it's an off-topic for another discussion about the different requirements. I just want to make sure that we are still looking. I, I don't want to put a warm body in a classroom.
We don't either.
I just, I mean, I, I'm sure you don't. I'm just saying that's.
Yeah. Do we pay for the background checks, the fingerprinting and that kind of thing?
After so many days of subbing with us, we do.
Now, I. We don't pay for it initially.
I'm sorry?
We don't pay for it initially.
No.
How many days is that? Cause I've heard that people are getting different feedback on whether or not we pay and how do they get that?
Check with HR.
Confirmed.
I'm not sure. We can get back with you.
Find out.
Yeah, cause I, I've heard that people are being told that we don't when that question is asked. So I think it might be helpful if we can get some clarification out to substitutes, because I think, I think there is some confusion.
We did that last year, but I'll check.
Yeah, I think there's some confusion about that. And I think that that might help us get people to substitute for us for a number of days if we can clarify how that works and how many days and how they verify and get reimbursed. So.
Got it.
There were a number on the personnel list for tonight, there were a number of um long-term subs. Is that part of this same issue that you're addressing?
Yes.
Are those for individual buildings?
Are they building subs or just?
No, they're not providing subs. They're different circumstances, either health issues, pregnancy, things like that.
Covering current classrooms then. So that doesn't actually help, I learned, or subs up, okay.
Do all of our buildings have their own sub at this point? Long-term sub?
Yes.
Building sub?
Yes.
So building sub is different than the long-term?
Than a long-term sub, yeah.
Some of those long-term subs, like Matt said, we, we're trying to throw everything at it to try to find people. But one of the things that we've tried to do is put some of those um leaves together to say, okay, instead of finding three different subs for three different people, we know we've got three people are going to have an absence. Let's put them all together and find someone for a longer period of time and with the ability of paying them more. So it's a more attractive um situation for people. And so.
Basically moving long-term, like they would do a long-term sub here and then go to this. That makes sense.
We're, we're trying to.
I just know that.
Outside of the box.
I just know the pool is very slim everywhere. They were talking about that at OSBA too, in some sessions.
It's across the state. It's not that it's just to look everywhere, but I, I don't want to hear about two or three classes in a media center.
Right.
Where there's no learning happening. I had, I had a question on the personnel list. It seems to be a fairly large number of resignations of both teachers and support staff. Kind of an odd time of year for that. Just wondered if um, are there any reasons we could share?
I mean, if some of them are for purposes of retirement, which I'm, I'm looking at them right now, but um they're all just saying resignation, but support staff.
Yeah.
Lot of aides.
I think it's uh speaks to what we're seeing nationwide.
But it's.
That's very true.
It's a hard job.
Yep.
I mean, it's been a hard job. It's a hard job now, especially if you look at the IA, um, our aides. Um, and you know, I just, 100 bucks a day for a sub. Let's just remember if we want something other than a living, breathing person in those rooms, 100 bucks a day is 1,250 an hour. And we're expected them to be in a classroom nurturing kids all day and being a guest teacher. And so I agree, I don't know what the right number is, but when I look at these resignations, um you know, everyone's got a story on here, but it's a tough time to be in education right now. It's tough.
So what I thought process be to do the $100 and see if it helps and then have a discussion?
Unless somebody wants to make a motion to increase that.
I don't know how you would come up with a number. I, I, I would be uncomfortable personally coming up with a number.
Do we have a district comparison?
I would nickel and dime it to be like 110 or 105, I would say. The next significant bump would be 125.
I, I think we need.
We can get that from other districts.
We can bring it to the next board meeting.
I'm willing to go with this so that you can deal with it immediately, but I'd like to see a district comparison. That's, that's who we're competing with for subs.
I, I will also say this. There's only a certain period of time that the ESC wants us to change those rates. And so we would also need to reach out to the ESC to see if they would even allow us to make another adjustment. It's based on their, I mean, because we contract with them for these subs. So we can reach out and find out.
A yearly thing Jenny? I mean, like if we did this now and then at the beginning of the school year next, you know, this doesn't help at the beginning of the school year next year, then we bump it again. Is that appropriate? Or do you just not?
I think that's too long to wait.
Let, let us find out exactly what those stipulations are around.
So what would you have to do? Do you want to wait until December to do the vote if you're only getting one vote?
Let's do 100 now, and then we can always up it if we can next for the next month. My other thing is I don't think there's a, a lot of people sitting at home that's, that's, that would say, if you give me 10 more dollars, I'll come in.
Or, but I think Jenny's point about being creative around the fact that we don't have to go necessarily with degrees with the same requirements that we had before.
I'm agreeing. I, yeah, I can.
I have some comparisons here that, um, that Butler County Educational Service Center is $100. Butler Tech just went from 100 to 125.
There you go.
Edgewood's at 90, Fairfield's at 94. Hamilton went from 97 to 105. Madison went from 95 to 110. Middletown went from 90 to 105. Monroe went from 90 to 105. New Miami's at 100, Ross is at 95, Tallawanda's at 95. Marley's at 100, Franklin went from 95 to 120, Kings is at 92, Robinan's at 95. Little Miami went from 95 to 125. Springbrough's at 100, Warren County Vocational's at 100 and went to 125. Wayne is at 100. So that gives you some ideas.
You know, something else to consider is what is hourly pay in restaurants and that kind of thing. Are the same people that we're looking to sub if we want quality people? Are they doing other things because workers are so hard to come by? I know it's a bigger issue and
Right.
I think it's worthwhile to do some more investigating and thinking about what to do.
So are we comfortable keeping that in there and bumping it up to 100 today?
I think it's your recommendation.
That's the minimum I would suggest. That's the minimum I would suggest.
Yeah. Oh, definitely. Would you like to increase your recommendation today? Or would you like to leave it at 100?
You don't get this chance.
I need to check with the ESC before we do that.
Right. Yeah. So would you like to give us to give you latitude up to a larger dollar amount today in our vote? So then you have the ability
Yes.
To go up to a larger amount?
That's a great idea.
We can.
What's the cap?
Don't go crazy.
25 was the highest.
That's what I heard.
Yeah, so I don't, okay. So make a motion. We're going to pull out A and vote on it separately. We're going to modify that motion. I need a motion to approve superintendent action items B through D. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Mrs. Logan, will you call the roll, please, when you get a minute?
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes. Now we need a motion to modify superintendent recommendation A to say up to $125 at the discretion of the treasurer and the superintendent. So all personnel items.
I would not go that high without seeing some more information.
She just wrote.
Is that what he was asking for? Was 125?
That's what he was asking for. I thought that's what we agreed on. He was asking for a latitude up to 125 depending on what the ESC says.
And up to.
Based on the changing, like based on the fact that we can only change it once.
I'm uncomfortable with that, but I'll, I'll go with it. I think it's a need we need to address. Okay.
So do I have a motion to, to do that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Just like, when you call the roll, please.
So I want to make sure. So this motion is to approve the personnel items and to modify the sub-rate teacher amount to reflect up to $125.
Based on your discussion with the ESC.
Okay. Okay, um, Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes. Um, this is the point where our second time for public comment, but we don't have anybody signed in.
Maybe didn't. I don't remember saying.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes. I don't remember, but maybe I did.
Oh my goodness. Um, okay. Closing comments. And we can. Did we, did you sign in, sir? But we still. Jesse, sir, did you sign in?
I did not. I'm not signing yet.
We still are under our old policy, so.
We have, have a, work your way up here, sir.
Is that on? It's not high enough. I think it needs to be higher.
Well, there you go.
Rusty Jesse, Justice Lane, uh, I think the sub thing, I think that's part of the great resignation. If you have, if you're not familiar with that term, it's out there. People wanting to change their life over the past couple of years.
Right.
Uh, as far as the open record stuff, um, who made the decision to outsource that to a law firm? So that we're paying an associate attorney however much for him or her to respond to a request about an email instead of someone on Lakota's staff. And as far as the AP stuff, um, uh, it's good that it's expanding. But I think every family needs to know Lakota does not cover the 95 to $100 uh testing fee. Uh, this district needs to make sure that uh families are aware that if you don't get a four, that if the student doesn't get a four or a five on the exam, they don't get college credit. Um, that you have to do your registration early in November. Maybe late October is when you have to pay for it. Now my son, we actually, you know, we saw him last night and we talked about that for whatever reason. And he said one of the AP classes, I think it was history that he took and he got the four or five. He actually got to count that towards two classes at college as opposed to just one, which I'm assuming is means six hours of credit as opposed to three that he would, or six that he would have taken. So it was a really good deal. And you know, some people, well, we'll say that. Some people leave and so we're going to let that go. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Mrs. Logan, would you like to address the question about?
The public records request? Sure, um. The public records request, um. The public records request, um, going back to the conversation that we had earlier in the meeting has become, it has slowed down a little bit lately. But it had gotten to a point, it was unmanageable with staff, current staff. Um, and so at that time I did speak to the board about having the attorney who had helped us with public records training to assist us with those uh public records requests. I will say though, that staff on hand is still gathering the information and putting that together under the supervision to make sure that we are managing them appropriately and legally. Because the last thing we want to do is not adhere to a public records request in the proper way and be in a liable situation. So we changed the way that we do that, but we are still gathering the information. So the legal fees that we are receiving for that are really looking over what we're putting together and advising us on exactly what we need to do. Because Jenny, it I I don't know if people, you know, if you don't do a public record request, you don't always understand. I mean, I didn't until I was on the board because I never did one. But when you have someone ask you for a public records request that they want all of the emails between all of the board members and Matt and Jenny on the subject of the five-year forecast, I'm making that up, on the five-year forecast for the last three months. That's a lot of emails to gather and to go through and to see. So first you have to go through all of our emails, then you have to see, and correct me if I'm wrong, then you have to see if the topic that the person has asked for is in all of those emails. So it's a lot, uh, it sometimes it's hundreds of emails that you have to go through to find the topic or the, and then the administrator of it legally. So I think it's so much more than people think. I I know it's way more than I thought as I started getting when I first got elected and started getting all those emails, I thought I had to get all the public records requests together. Yeah, I'm nervous. Some of the, some of the public records requests that we've had in the past year, year and a half, two years have been um really lengthy. Um, and some of the records requested we we had to reach out to legal to advise us, you know. Is this asking for too much? How do we go about responding back? And so we have, even before the responses started coming from the attorney, the attorneys have been involved. Oh, yeah. They have been involved. So um, the thing that changed from a public view is that the email is now coming from the attorney saying. We've always used the attorneys. Yes. But we have. Okay, um.
Also on the AP piece, I would just say it's not always a four or five, three colleges, some colleges, depending on the course, will give credit for threes as well. So just wanted to clarify that.
Anybody else? Okay, we have reached the point where we will have some closing comments and I'm going to start with Mr. Miller.
Um, thank you. Thanks for the the group that has come tonight. Um, just a a scheduling change for the December board meeting. We're going to make it a little more festive. We have some kids that are going to come sing some holiday songs for us and um, because of the logistics of that, we're going to do it at noon on December sixteenth.
And we're moving into the sixteenth because there's a conflict with a conference in Columbus on Monday.
There is.
It'll be my fault, Jenny.
It's a conflict of the conference.
So it will be Thursday, the sixteenth at noon. It'll be a holiday.
Please come festive.
Said no. Please come festive.
Seriously.
Yeah, okay.
Where is it? Will it be here? It'll be right here. Yep. And we'll have kids helping us out and student ambassadors, getting people here and square your red and green.
Or whatever.
Silver. Or red and black when the bear cats are in the playoffs.
Or your Santa costume. Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Logan. I just want to say how impressed I was with our student, not even so much that he won the state championship in golfing, but his presence and his speaking ability, I was really impressed. So congrats to him and his family and the team and the coach. It was something nice to to celebrate. Um, also just a shout out to um Adam Zink, Assistant Treasurer.
Wake up back.
And all all the help that um he had putting this five-year forecast together. Um, and the team, the the entire finance team. I know I get to sit up here and talk through all this stuff, but there's a lot of people that go into making it all happen. Um, so, thank you.
That's her.
Your turn.
Um, no, congratulations to uh Joseph again. I I agree. He's very well spoken. Um, and he's really a good example of of our kids. So thank you for that. And because I don't know what's all in store for next month, I just want to say thank you to this board for um taking me under your wing. Um, when I got involved with the board, I really just got involved to, because I I love this community. Um, I love this district. Um, and it taught me a lot. Um, even though it was challenging, obviously fifteen months, um, and it wasn't challenging the whole fifteen month, it got challenging up here. But I learned so much, um, really about this community, learned so much about us and each of these board members. Thank you. I I feel like, you know, hope that our relationship will maintain to uh Matt and Jenny, thank you. Um, it was a pleasure working with you both. Um, I still hope to stay involved. Um, I think it's important that the new board really work hard to, yes, meet the needs of our kids, our our teachers, our administrators and their service, but also look to see, doing what they can do to unite us. There's still, you know, there's less people here tonight, obviously, but um, there's still some folks that are, you know, frustrated, um, still some people who are questioning, you know, what the future looks like. And uh, I want to be still part of the solution as much as I possibly can. Thank you to um parents, kids who I've met while I served. Um, again, I I don't regret it. I really don't regret it. It's taught me a lot. Thank you too for the opportunity to go to the um, to the conference. Um, a couple of weeks ago, learn so very, very much, even coming off. I still learned and and got to meet and talk to other people who are in my position, coming off of the board, not voted in, but really was able to share other ways how we can still stay involved and connected um in a different way, um, which I'm really excited about. So I just want to say thank you.
You still have time next month, so think of some other thing. I hope that wasn't all you had to say, Michael.
I know, right?
Michael, you're a good man and thank you for what you've done for fifteen months. You have a, you've really made a difference. You've been a good voice and you'll be missed. Um, you know, I I smile a little bit. There's a lot of advice to the incoming board about um what they need to be doing. And I just want to say that as part of the current board, my goal is that we end this board on a positive note and as a good role model for our students. So I hope that's shared. I want to say congratulations to Joseph Wilson. He was so articulate and such an example of leadership and so proud of what he's going to be doing at Ohio State and look forward to watching that. Um, thank you also to Lakota West Choir for a veterans event that they performed for our community veterans on uh uh, November twelfth. They did an incredible job. You could tell they've been practicing for several months and the vets were very, very touched by what they what they did and standing up and saluting our kids. And it was, it was a very touching moment, a very, very neat moment. Thank you to um Nicholas McGill and Beth Beth Hoffbar over at Lakota West for all the work they did with the kids. Had the chance this week to go to at the invitation of Jason Prince to the Real World One-O-One. I was thinking of it as Adulting One-O-One actually. Um, over at Lakota West Building where the kids had a chance, one day, forty different sessions and had a chance to go and participate in half-hour blocks on different things that might interest them. I stopped in at banking, uh, mental health, patriotism, what I wish I knew, which was really cool. It was some of our seniors, six seniors had gone to talk to the freshmen to say what I wish I'd known when I was in your seat and then um where they were sitting at as seniors. And it was just a really nice moment. I hope they expand it. I think it's a great opportunity for kids just to get a taste of some some things that they need and had a great chance to talk with some of our teachers about study skills and some of those kind of things where she feels like we could be making a difference. So really enjoyed that. So thanks for all the work that went into those opportunities for our students.
Mrs. Schaefer? Congratulations. Our student spotlight, always the highlight of every meeting. Congratulations to Keith for the program of studies. I think we often don't fully appreciate the breadth and depth of opportunities that our students have within Lakota um and how much they can take advantage of when they are here and how far along they can be into their college education and how well prepared they are for that college education by the opportunities they can take advantage of within Lakota. It continues to expand. It continues to have opportunities like Shark Tank, like Cyber Academy that are so innovative. And because it's so routine within Lakota, I sometimes think we just assume that other schools have those same opportunities and we don't fully appreciate that this is not a typical experience until our students go off and interact with other kids and realize the child they're sitting next to is not nearly as prepared. And they're able to sail through organic chemistry in a way that their classmate isn't because they had the depth of teaching and the depth of experience within Lakota. So I just wanted to congratulate Keith and his entire team on what just looks like a program of studies. But it really is amazing. And as a student, you go through that program of studies and they're like, how can I possibly pare this down to seven opportunities in a year? Um, because it's just incredible what these kids have to choose from. So, you know, when the legislature passes a mandate for this or that course, it's like, we've got that covered in spades, you know? It doesn't, we don't have to worry about that. It's already something the kids have an opportunity to do. So just thank you for that work and presenting that to us tonight, Jenny. Thank you for your continued work to keep us in good stead as you always do and talk about the balance as you always do. So thank you for that. Um, and just reflecting on Thanksgiving, which is a holiday we just passed. Um, I just am thankful for everything that this district has done to keep us on a steady, steady course. Um, and I hope everybody had a few days to be with their family and enjoy that time as well. I know I I'll be personal for a second. I just had an opportunity to step back and my mother turned ninety in January, but we had nineteen of us celebrating her birthday over Thanksgiving. So I am incredibly grateful for that personally, and I hope everyone else had similar opportunities over Thanksgiving to be thankful with their family.
You did an awesome job articulating what I was going to say about um the work that Mr. Coney and his team did around the programs of study. There's a lot of work that goes into that and to the point of just the amount of opportunities our students have is is just absolutely incredible. So thank you to them for um just the continued work that they do each and every day to do their best to meet our community and our students' needs. Um, the other thing I would say is that, um, you know, welcome to our new board members. Um, unfortunately, they weren't able to attend this evening. Um, but you know, as we look at January, look the future, I I keep telling people that I truly believe the best is yet to come. I also know and I believe that Lakota is bigger than five people that sit at this table and I'm grateful for that. Um, I think that, you know, as we all get elected and we have in our minds what we want to do, I always just kind of keep this reminder and I've tried to remind myself of this is that there is no community mandate for any one of us. Um, you can just look at the amount of people actually vote. What I would say is that all five of us collectively represent the entire community, diversity of our community and the thoughts, but not any one of us actually represent um the majority thought. And so um, I I I believe in Lakota. I live here. I love it. You guys know that. You've heard me say that for four straight years. Um, I look forward to many years in Lakota, watching my daughters go through the system. Um, and again, I I just believe in my heart that um this district and what we do every day is bigger than us five. It's about the people that we employ. Um, and I'm so thankful this holiday season, um, I'm just thankful for every single person in this district that's chosen to show up every day and work with our kids because that's what it's about and that's what our community is about. And they're what makes Lakota and that's special.
When you were the president, you asked, everybody says everything that you wanted to say. So I'm just going to ditto what everybody said, especially about Joe because he's so impressive. And I do want to, just a shout out to the community and a thanks for re-electing me and I hope I can do proud in four more years. Um, we need a motion to move into executive session. My gosh, my screen is so not right, to enter into executive session to consider the employment and compensation of a public employee or official. I will need a motion. So moved.
Second.
When you have a minute, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes, we will not be doing any business or approving anything coming out of executive session, but we will be holding executive session in this room. Have a good evening, everyone.
Right to the restroom.